Good evening, everybody. Today is January 10th, 2019, and we're going to begin our board session. We have a quorum. We're going to begin with an act of reverence, and we're also going to do the pledge of allegiance. You know, my tradition is I pick the youngest person, it's usually a child or young student in our district, but we don't seem to have any young folks here today. Who's the youngest person behind the camera here? How you gonna do that? And are we live now? Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so just, all right, ready? Come on, we need your help. Could you, again, let, so that everybody knows, tell us your name, and we're all gonna stand with you and do the pledge of allegiance. What's your name?
Samir.
Samir. Good to have you here tonight. We appreciate all your good work. We're gonna do a little extra work tonight. If you'd lead us in the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give him a round of applause for not only this work that he did, but the work that he does when he's behind the camera. We really appreciate you all's work. And I know Vice President Elliott has worked on a communications plan that you all are integral part of, to make sure that we reach more of our citizens and our parents and our students who are not able to travel, particularly on a bad night like tonight. So, I hope, I know the whole board hopes to see that plan being executed throughout the balance of this calendar year. We thank Vice President Elliott and all the, my other colleagues who worked with her on that plan. So, let's get down to business. There are no minutes, and I'm told by our clerk, our able clerk, Dr. Shanae Lee, that there are no people speaking to any agenda item or off-the-agenda item. That's correct, ma'am clerk? Next on our agenda is a superintendent's report, Dr. Nelms. And as Dr. Nelms takes the podium, I want to tell folks, share with you all, a conversation I had with Dr. Lee, our staff person to the board and our clerk. The board has decided many months ago to sort of modify how we approach board meetings. You may notice that this is one of two business meetings that we're going to have. You may also notice conspicuously missing from our, the agenda is committee reports, and you're gonna see some other changes. I want to tell everybody watching and including my colleagues that as we sort of make our way through this new process, mistakes are gonna be made. And I'm gonna rely on people, particularly my colleagues who are closest to me, you can whisper in my ear, where I screw up, that, hey, wait a second, you forgot this. So, this is a whole new process. The hope is, the prayer is, that it will allow us to proceed more efficiently and effectively as a board, and I think we're gonna begin to see some of that tonight. One of the big differences that you'll see tonight is what we intend on doing is having Dr. Nelms, or the EPO, which is a part of this district, let me remind folks, it's not a charter school, it's not a private school, the employees are district employees, they work for us just like everybody else in this building and beyond. But what we've decided to do is have the EPO give a superintendent's report at the first meeting, business meeting that we have in a month, and then the second business meeting that we have, the superintendent of the balance of our schools will be giving their superintendent report. So, again, we hope and pray that this will make us a little bit more efficient, more effective, and again, I will say, if I or any of my colleagues make a mistake, gently, respectfully, draw my attention to that, and I'll get it right. Commissioner Powell.
I was just reminded, we were hoping to do some feedback or after-action review of each meeting, and now would be an excellent time to start so that we can, in fact, write down our comments or suggestions for changes for the future. But we don't have a template in front of us to do that today. Perhaps by next meeting, we could have just a quick, maybe four or five-question survey that says, you know, what went right, what went wrong, what can we do different, you know, did we accomplish what we meant to accomplish?
Makes sense. Dr. Lee, you think you can help us accomplish that by our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. The other thing I do want to point out, as I deal regularly with the staff, and I know many of you do as well, and this is for my colleagues especially, but also for district staff, as many of you may know, we have a very small staff at the Board of Education. They're being asked to do a lot of things right now, including conducting and doing the bulk of the work on the superintendent search, helping Dan Lowengard and Linda Simmons' transition, always, as always, assisting our superintendent and the wonderful leadership that she has in this building. I would remind you all, this is, and you all know, not getting any details, but some of our staff have personal challenges at this time, so they're not available to do the things that they normally would do. So, I would ask my colleagues and my colleagues that are sitting in front of me, be cognizant of the fact that they're, they, that is, board staff are being asked to do a lot of things at this time, and I would ask for your patience, your indulgence, and even if something is not done in accordance with your expectations, I would ask that you deal with them respectfully, not that anybody hasn't, but I know these tense times can make us say things that maybe we wouldn't say under normal circumstances. So, please, be mindful that they are stretched and they are doing their very best to provide us the top-notch services that they always have. So, I'm sorry, Dr. Nelms, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and welcome back, Dan and Linda. It's a pleasure, this community is lucky to have you both back and serving its students and staff. You guys both have a proven track record, you did incredible work here before, and we look forward to continuing that work in the future. Tonight, my update is going to kind of do a past, present, and considerations for the future for East. What I realized after the reorg meeting two weeks ago is that four of the seven board members were not here when the EPO first began, and so I think it's important that we kind of anchor back into it as we enter this year and as we have discussions in the future. I'm also going to continue to extend the opportunity for folks to visit East, to see what's happening firsthand, and possibly do also, in a study session also at some point in time. But today, I want to kind of go back and just remind the board that this was a Board of Education, or this is a Board of Education initiative. This was not done to us by the state, the conditions of which receivership are under was a state mandate, but even before receivership was the Educational Partnership Organization statute, and that was for a school that the state had determined had failed. So, if you think about, you have high-performing, you have schools that are in good standing, you have high-need schools that are struggling but still doing relatively well, you have failing schools that often fall into receivership status, and then you have the failed schools, the schools that the state determines are going to be closed. East was a failed school based, as determined by the state back in 2012, '13. During that time, the board president and vice president, I believe it was at the time it was Commissioner White and Commissioner Elliott, had to consider several options for the school. One option was to close the school altogether, something that I'm sure this district knew would not be right for the kids and families in that school. Another was to convert it to a charter school. Many of our charter schools actually are situated in our elementary schools and not in our secondary schools, and that's because it's hard to turn around secondary schools because there are so many years of perhaps kids be having educational gaps. There's other systemic and structural issues that come with trying to turn around a secondary school from grade six through 12 or 712, and so charter schools weren't really interested in that model. To operate under the State University of New York, to phase out, that model was, the phase-out model was attempted here in many schools, that's when you remove half the staff and half the students, replace them with half, with more staff and more students, and we know that those models have proven not to be overly successful. Or to do something that was new called the Educational Partnership Organization or the EPO. In this case, the EPO became the University of Rochester after many, many talks between the school board, the state, and the University of Rochester. So, when we enter East, I want to go back to when we entered East, just to remind the board, part of the EPO plan was written based on the data that we received from the district, the extracurricular data, but also the quality of data from surveys and focus groups with parents, community members, staff, and students. And there were several issues that needed to be addressed, both operationally, structurally, but also academically. One of the key components that we saw at East was the success rate of our students with disabilities. If you see the chart there, we saw that nearly 60% of our special ed students for the four years prior to the EPO had dropped out of East. And we also, it was also determined after some analysis that the special ed program that we had at the time, the integrated co-teach model at the time, was proven ineffective, and the state agreed and gave us an innovation waiver to work with parents, reclassify them as consultant teacher, to give them actually more services than the state actually allows. So, our inclusive ed kids, kids who have inclusive ed services receive nearly twice the amount of services that would originally be ammissible by, in previous years. The second thing that we saw in our data that was troubling, which made us really focus at the ninth grade of the freshman academy, was the retention rate, meaning the number of kids in that previous year, in 2014, '15, that were held back at the grade level. And I remind the board, when I first started, that nearly 25 of our students in eighth grade were reaching the age of 16 or 17. In context, my daughter was 13 when she was in eighth grade, and so the age range was there due to the fact that there were so many kids being held back, and when we dug deeper into that, we discovered that many kids were held back, so they would never reach the ninth grade, hence not impacting the graduation rate negatively. And so, you look at the other retention numbers, 57% of the kids at ninth grade, that means that more than half of the kids were in ninth grade the next year. And so, and then of the sophomores, juniors, and seniors, you see those retention rates also. So, we had to focus at ninth grade because you had this large bubble, where the vast majority of ninth graders at East were kids who had been ninth graders possibly once, twice, or three times before. They never reached the number of credits needed to be considered sophomores, juniors, and or seniors. From our staff and student data, student discipline was an issue that emerged. And if you look at the chart here, the upper box gives you the total number of suspensions at each of those grade levels. And again, if you look at just the sheer number of students at grade nine, if you look at the 591 number, that means that most of those kids were kids who were repeating ninth grade. So, you saw this huge bubble, and so we put in the structure of freshman academy, and we also adopted the restorative practice model to re-engage students in the learning process. You can't function in a school when you have the rate of suspensions that you have listed here, and I'll illustrate this in a later chart. So, we've worked in the past four years on the board's behalf at East to address behavior discipline in these ways, and you see the numbers of suspensions from the top line, where you had nearly 2,400 reported suspensions, to the bottom line, where you have 349 for the 17, '18 school year. The question's often asked, well, you have less kids, so there should be less suspensions. If you look to the far right, the last two columns, that gives you the illustration of what percent of students in 2014, '15, so 174% of students were suspended at least once compared to the enrollment, and 44% of those students were suspended at least one or more times. And if you follow that same chart to the bottom, the 39%, you'll see that 39% of the students in that, based on that enrollment last year, were suspended, and 20% of them suspended one or more times. Yep, please.
Mean by 174%?
Well, because there were more suspensions than there were kids. So, that's, yeah, so, right, duplication. So, you have, so, most of the time, kids were suspended at East, and 44% were suspended at least one or more times. So, I mean, what I want to paint a picture of is an environment where you had kids who were held back at certain grade levels, weren't doing well academically, and you had kids who were constantly being suspended, and that was the environment which kids were learning in and staffed. So, we had to really dig deep into the data and work with parents and our staff and our students to create an environment where less kids are suspended and being re-engaged, except in those real critical issues that we had suspended. Kids will be suspended if they fight repeatedly, if they bring in weapons, if they do things that are not sexually appropriate, but for the most part, we go through a litany of interventions before suspensions are given, and we very rarely allow long-term suspensions to be administered unless they're in very dangerous situations involving multiple kids in the school. The academic work continues. These are the demonstrable indicators from the state. This is the lower school ELA from last year. You'll see that we met in each of those indicators for ELA, and also in math. I'm not gonna go through each of those categories, but you can see the progress in the baseline in 13, '14 across to the status in 17, '18 for each of those measures, and you'll see where the progress takes shape. I will also say to you that these aren't good enough. We continue to revise our curriculum, we continue to support our common form of assessments as a team, so we will take a test, teachers will give it commonly, we will go and we'll dig through it in our collaborative planning time to see what the gaps are in the curriculum, and then reteach things and spiral that work, and we continue to do that work. It's also the reason why we were pushing for years for the 33 feeder pattern partnership because it's hard when you start over every single year for all of our schools in the district. It's hard when you start over every single year reassessing students, trying to find out what the gaps they have, what the curriculum gaps they've had, they come from different schools, and where some of their reading and numeracy deficiencies might be as well. And so, having information about kids through the system, like you see in most suburban or rural schools, who have one high school, maybe one middle school or two middle schools, becomes essential and paramount, or at least up for discussion. Based on the freshman data, again, we started to look at our freshman academy and used our five-plus credits for students, and you'll see that before we arrived, 49% of our students were moving on to ninth grade with the right credits, and then you see that number fluctuate and increase from 15, '16 to the present. The bottom number is an indication of how students are performing on the math and science as well, two exams that are needed for graduation. At the upper school, you'll see, you'll see demonstrable Based on the freshman data, again, we started to look at our freshman academy and used our five-plus credits for students. And you'll see that before we arrived, 49% of our students were moving on to ninth grade with the right credits. And then you see that number fluctuate and increase from 15-16 to the present. The bottom numbers is an indication of how students are performing on the math and science as well, two exams that are needed for graduation. At the upper school, you'll see demonstrable indicators that are met and not met as well. And I just remind the board, the old board members who were here previously, and now the new board members, when the state came to East as a failing school, as a failed school, they acknowledged that many of the indicators that were selected were based on students who no longer were present at East. So they gave our numbers based on kids who should have been there two years ago. So this is the first year where the numbers are actually aligned with the kids that we've actually seen over the four years. And you'll see the same thing for upper school demonstrable indicators. What's also important to note, I'm not certain if I mentioned this prior, if we had green in everything except graduation, you would still be a school receivership, because the statute says you must have 67% graduation rate in high schools to be off of the list. That's it is, that's a must. And so last year, we were at 61, and we expect to exceed that this year. But again, that's, this is our first, this year is our first year we had a group of freshmen go through the entire system. So this will be our first graduating cohort, if you will.
So Dr. Nelmes, I didn't, I'm embarrassed to say this, I didn't appreciate that fact. So you cannot come off the receivers, not you in particular, a high school cannot come off the receivership list if your graduation rate is under 67%, or is not 67%?
Right. And so I want to, I said this two meetings ago, right now, we're under the receivership model for the state. So any school that goes on or comes off may be put back on when you go to ESSA July 1st. And so I have a team, we all have a team, I think, in Albany right now with training to understand how do we bridge from the receivership statute to the ESSA statute, the federal statute that begins July 1. And they're getting clarity around that now. The call I had when I was driving over is that there's still a lack of clarity around how they're going to bridge those two systems, the state system, receivership, and the federal system, ESSA. So there'll be more information given to the district and myself as those things develop. But we have a team there, they've been there for three days with the state, trying to figure out how to do the metrics for these numbers. So more is to come there. This chart here, I think, is actually probably, of all the charts listed, is the most important one. And I think it's important because it helps to illustrate the trajectory in trying to predict the graduation rates. So I'm going to take 2014's column and go down, just to make this for simplicity. So the graduation rate that we reached was 61%. When students entered their senior year of those cohort, of that cohort, when they entered, 56% of those kids had passed the math regions. 49% of those kids had passed the science regions, and 35% had passed the ELA regions, which meant throughout their senior year, those kids recovered credits or took the course for the first time to have a graduation rate of 61%. You must pass those three exams in order to graduate from New York State. The exams in the bottom, global and American history, they will remain low because you can replace those exams with an CTE or Career Teaching Education credential. So you'll see the less kids take the exam, that lower number will be. It's not a pass or fail exam, it's a completion rate. So the completion rate could be low in global in U.S., but still impact the graduation rate positively because those kids may have gotten a credential in culinary, or optics, or vision care. All right? So the more CTE courses you have in high schools, the better off students will have in terms of their choices. So I would say, across all of our high schools, we have to ensure that there's a CTE track that gives students an opportunity to replace that global and American history exam. If you look at 2015, that's this year's senior class, and the NA is for graduate, because we haven't graduated in August yet, 70% of those kids have already passed math when they entered, 55 in science and 55 in ELA. So when I say to the board, when I'll say to the boards after January, once those exams are given, that I'm confident that our graduate will far exceed what it did this year, is because we already know the kids coming in, well, they've already passed, and allows us to target less kids in those targeted areas between now and June, and then August for the next iteration of the exam. Does that chart make sense? Okay. And then the other, the other piece that was, we're often asked about is the dropout rate. And the dropout rate, again, if you look at the freshmen who are held back, coupled with the services they were or were not receiving, the dropout rate in 2012 cohort, if we got there, was 41%. This year, we know 14% of our kids have already moved to a task or GED program, or some have dropped out. But it's not 41%, and we hope that that number continues to drop into the single digits and eventually zero. Another question that we often get is funding. It actually came up tonight, at the report, at the Sigrid Educators Forum tonight. The funding for the EPO, I don't want to get into a place where I'm defending it, but I'm going to just explain how the funding occurred in the mishap around the $36,000 per pupil that hit the newspaper and became a new narrative for East. And it seems like every year, there's a new narrative, but this is the financial narrative. So the fiscal transparency document, which is provided by the district to the state, is a document that projects the budget for the next year. All right? So it's a bucket of money that's divided among schools, that's projected. Ed Trust New York, a policy group, took the number, divided it by kids that were in the report. The numbers in the report weren't accurate, the actual number of students weren't accurate, and they created a number based on projections. But we know, and the state actually acknowledges, because this year, every school has to actually report the expenditure, how much did you actually spend? So you always project high, and you spend less, and then that's where your fund balance comes in and other things that you have to pay for that are unexpected. And so the EPO has constantly given back about $4 million, because the projected cost of our school is less than we actually spend through efficiencies. And so I want to just bring the board back, and I think this will be resolved with the states in rollout of the expenditure reports, that the fiscal transparency document was never intended to be used to calculate per pupil costs, because it doesn't even include revenue. I see you shaking your head, Quilla. But that hit the paper, and it became a new narrative. So everywhere I go, it's East is costing as much. I will say that East does cost more than other schools, because it was a failed schools model, and there was unfunded mandates in those things too, like an extended school day. The state says you have to provide more opportunities for teachers to teach and kids to learn. So each of our teachers work an extra hour a day, you have to pay for that. And that's expensive intervention, or professional learning, or curriculum development, or whatever. I also want to say that there are certain duplicate charges for some certain functions that this district has that we don't. For example, we developed our own curriculum development at East, which you all have seen, yet in that transparency document, we were charged for curriculum development from the district. So we were kind of hit twice. The same thing for certain services with this office. Yes, I work really well with some of the deputies and assistants, superintendents, but we don't use their services enough to justify their total salary or parts of their salary within our budget, and mine and theirs. Same thing for professional development, as well as some special ed services. There's another, a bunch of longer lists included as well. But the point is that when you look at, when you look at the budget, and you have additional receivers or EPOs, there's some things that I would suggest that we look at, is that we actually look at adjusting the per pupil calculation to reflect the expenditures, the money that we actually spend in our schools. And you may look at some other variants too, like attendance. So if you have a large school that has an attendance rate of 60%, you have a small school that has an attendance rate of 95%, those numbers may look more similar than you think based on actual kids in the seats and the teachers that are assigned to teach them. So I would take a really close look at attendance, not just average daily attendance, but period-by-period attendance. Second is to understand the cost of running an EPO program as opposed to running the entire school building. By that, I mean, I could take the design of the EPO and place that in any school setting, based on curriculum and professional development. But at East, we had to incur additional costs because the building was in very rough shape. We had to upgrade the gym, cafeteria, the auditorium, the classroom space, the equipment was broken, the security systems had to be redone, we had to put in new cameras in all the spaces. We are remodeling the cafeteria to reassemble how we do food for our kids. All those things would not be cost in a building that already had those things fixed. So I think when we look at, how do you calculate an EPO-like program, we have to actually cost out the actual cost of the program separate from the cost of running the building, when those things would be, what things would occur anyways naturally, as a suggestion. And then looking at what that means to go from a failed school model to a high needs model. If the board continues to support the continuation of the EPO in some form, there are many expenses that we won't occur, we won't need to have five years from now. For example, we don't have to rebuild our curriculum because it's done. And we can maybe spread the use of our teacher leaders to other schools to support implementation of that curriculum if needed. But that might be something that we talk about in a study session, where we can really dig into some of the inner workings of the EPO. And the last few slides I want to go through too, is to look at, since this is a board initiative, and these are things that boards, the board paid for, is to continue to look at the identification and implementation of the EPO strategies that you all deem effective. And so where are their cost savings? If there's curriculum, we don't have to pay an outside consultant to do that work. How do we maximize our professional learning by utilizing our teacher leaders differently? Is there a benefit to having internal consultants as opposed to external contracts? And those are things that we can talk about based on what the board deems as something that might be replicated or modified from the EPO plan. Also, I would encourage the board to come visit East. I want to congratulate our newest board member, Reverend Davis, Commissioner Davis, for coming. And she came to East and spent about two and a half hours there, and visited classrooms and asked some very thoughtful questions about our data, but got a chance to see East in action. And I think it's different from me describing it, when you're actually in the building and seeing it, and being able to ask students and staff real meaningful questions in real time. And then also, we may want to reconsider the 612 configuration at East. You all know it's been a struggle to get the 33 MOU implemented and by design. It's also very expensive, because we're holding on the staff in the sixth grade, waiting for that day for that to occur. If we don't get to a point where that's going to happen, then we may want to look at the configuration at East to be more aligned with the district. However, I'm going to reiterate and say, I think that getting kids earlier and connected to secondary schools is better than having them in an elementary school and not having a direct connection, academic connection, between the elementary and secondary schools. And that is for my report.
Any questions?
Yes.
No? I guess we're good?
I had one.
Oh, yes. Dr. Hallmark?
Yeah, do we have a study session planned?
No, no, I was just, I was just suggesting that that might be something. So it's funny, someone asked me today, how much longer is the EPO functioning? And I said, we have three semesters. If you think about it, it's the end of this year is one semester, the first semester of next school year, and then the following. And that's the extent of the EPO. And so it's a really short timeline. And I think that any decisions we're going to make in terms of next steps, or what we're going to do, should be reviewed, studied, and then considered for whatever the board decides they want us to do with that.
I do know that the interim president of the University of Rochester has asked us to deliberate sooner than later on what the future might be, because he has said that if the district is going to not continue in this agreement, in this arrangement, that the district needs to properly plan its exit. But if it's going to continue, the work needs to be done on that score as well, so...
And I think that was, I think that comment was really in the context of like preparing the students and their parents and staff for whatever transition they're in. We have parents who are going to the expo this Saturday, signing up for East, and if East is no longer going to be an option two years from now, or three years from now, they should know that. And if it's going to be an option, they should know that as well. And so I think that there's, there's an opportunity that we have in the next six months to really understand where we're headed and to define that for ourselves. But, but yeah, you're right. And that was, that was in the spirit of that. I also want to say that there have been other commissioners too, besides Ms. Davis, who've taken, who've asked some really critical questions of the EPO to make, to force us to think differently about how we deliver services, but also to learn more about the inner workings. And the most recent other board member who's been really, really pushing me and challenging me has been Commissioner Shepherd. She's really asking really thought-provoking questions around the work that we're doing to get a better understanding of where we're headed. And so I want to thank you publicly for that, Natalie, and I appreciate that. All right. Is that it for questions?
More questions?
Yes, I have two related questions. The, from your presentation, the lower, the lower house demonstrable indicators doesn't include attendance as a requirement, and the, but the, and the upper house, it's not met and very stubborn, unmov, apparently unmoving number for the last four years. Can you talk to that specifically?
So the state gives us our indicators, and we can, we can select a few, but there are some that the state determines we have to have based on previous data. What the state realized at the upper school is that they chose data for kids, like, so in 14-15, they chose data actually from kids from '12-13. So we were responsible for kids who had left our system two years ago, who maybe not had graduated. And so when the state became more involved in EPO, they realized that these, the lower school data was more reflective of the kids that were there. The upper school data was more reflective of kids who had left, and so, who had been gone for years. And so that's part of the reason why the receivership indicators are changing, because I think at upper school, they're misaligned, and they actually use our structure and our data process with two other receivership schools in New York State, and they changed their receivership indicators because they realized that they didn't accurately reflect the kids who are sitting in front of them. In terms of attendance, I think that's been an issue we've, we're all struggling with. Attendance at the secondary level is hard. And we've done, I mean, we're at around 84-85%. I think our peak this year was at 89% beginning of September. But it is a moving target. I mean, I could tell the day after break, it was a really light day at the upper school in January. Like Wednesday was light, and Thursday, the kids came. And so we're trying to figure out what are the triggers that are keeping kids, making them stay home, or getting them to come to school. We hired two attendance monitors, we're still partnering with our bureau and other agencies to go to homes. We're visiting, our counselors and social workers are visiting homes tomorrow on the conference day of the kids with 10 days, nearly, who are almost reaching 10 days of absences. We're doing a lot of proactive things. But at the secondary level, upper school, getting 85% of kids has been consistently across the year, has been a struggle, something that we keep working on and looking into and researching.
You haven't, you haven't found a silver bullet?
I think relationships really matter, and I think that's why, I mean, when we got to, when we entered the EPO, I think attendance rate was closer to 72% or 75% at one point. And so we've seen some incremental growth, but there is no silver bullet. I think each family and each kid has his own unique situation. It's our responsibility to get to know what those unique situations are for each kid, and then adjust accordingly. And the other part I want to say, I mentioned this prior, is that the contract with RTS has proven to be problematic also, because the kids get one bus pass to school and one bus pass home. And so when a kid misses the bus in the morning, they have to pay for it. Or if a kid has to take, have to watch a sibling, or take care of a grandparent, and they missed the first bus because of that, they have to pay for it. We're identifying those kids, we're giving them bus passes, and working with RTS to do something that's flexible. But for the most part, kids who miss the first bus struggle coming to school later on in the day. So that's also, first period attendance is also low. That's why I said average daily attendance is one thing, but period-by-period attendance is equally, if not more, important.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, so actually, I was, I have a couple of questions, but I do want to go back to what you just said about RTS. Was that part of how the EPO is set up? Because other kids in the other high schools, they get an all-day pass. They get a, their bus pass is part of their ID, they get on the bus, they're able to catch different buses. There's some exceptions, I know that for some students, but I didn't realize that you guys are giving one day, one ride only passes, and that's not, that's not, that's not how it works in other high schools, so you'd understand.
Let me clarify. So first of all, our lower school kids get yellow buses, and our upper school kids get the same RTS bus passes as everyone else. And so the kids get an express bus pass from home to school. If you recall downtown, when they were negotiating RTS process, there was intent to prevent kids from going downtown.
Yep, from downtown. I remember all that.
I'm just saying to everybody. So, so I think that, I know that our process is very similar, it is the same process as the rest of the district, and kids cannot get on any bus they want.
I say that though, Sean, because you know, my kids were in high school at Douglas, and they had bus passes that if they missed the bus, they just took a second bus to the school. I've never had that issue as a parent. So I would like us to look into that a little bit further. We're also paying $7 and some change for transportation on RTS, which is more than an all-day pass. So you're saying that we're paying double for this express ride when it's, it's not 100% express, they're still making limited stops. Right. So I think we should also, as a board, look at those costs.
But I am pretty certain, Beatrice, that it's not, it's not just the East thing, that kids who miss their first bus, they're not allowed to get on. They get paid to go, but I think it should be looked into, and I know, I checked that with RTS.
Yeah, I'm going to look into it, because I never had that issue with my kids. And trust me, two girls in the morning trying to get them all out with one bathroom is very hard. So I just have a couple of things, and there's some things that I would just reach out to you to meet with you one-on-one, because I don't want to throw it on the record right at this very moment. Where says be here, real disciplinary data, and you list the school years and the incidents? There's not, the page is not numbered. I just want to, so this page here. You can just add a column with the actual enrollment numbers so that I can see the ratio to what that means. So there were 1,629 incidences, there could have been 2,000 students. I just need to see the number ratio to it.
You're talking about this slide here, Beatrice, in there?
Yes, sir. If you can just add a slide with the actual enrollment for year to year, that would be helpful for me. Some of the other data, like I said, I'm going to reach out to you one-on-one, Sean. The funding piece, one of the things that you talked about, so my understanding is that teachers at East are paid more money, almost $10,000 more. At least that was the case when the EPO first started, that there was an incentive. There's a similar incentive for another school in the district that was under receivership.
So, Beatrice, can I just clarify that? It's not an incentive for them to teach there, it's to compensate for the extra hour they work a day for the year. So when you, when the state.
So it comes out to $10,000, I'll work an extra hour every day, Sean, for $50,000.
I don't calculate it. I'm just saying, no, I would say that it was.
I need to calculate that, seriously, what that comes out to.
So the EPO has, that, when, when the EPO was receivership law, not EPO, receivership law mandates extended day for staff, I mean, for staff and for students. And so there was an extra hour in the day for staff to teach. And with that comes some additional planning that was negotiated. And it was, it's a state mandated requirement, and that's what that number comes out to be, close to that number. So for every hour a day for the entire year for planning and for instruction.
Yeah, I still want us to, I still want us as a board to look at that number. The other thing you said, you mentioned something about just the school not being out of receivership. That was at the beginning of the report. And I have to say, I was in Albany last summer to talk about schools and receivership in New York State with high ELL populations. Graduation rates, I've never personally heard that graduation rates are tied to getting a school out of receivership. So I would like us as a board to also try to get more information directly from the state ourselves. So I just want to throw this out to the board. And Jaime's here, so maybe he has some clarification, Dr. Akina, about receivership schools not being able, schools not being able to go out of receivership and it's tied to the graduation rate. So maybe you can clarify in that, or maybe they can have that conversation again.
Jaime, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Referring to the 67% graduation rate, that's a metric, it's a key metric on the commissioners' receivership designation. But I would also say, Beatrice, that, I mean, it's time well spent, but it's about to flip to ESSA in January. And it's going to be a whole new set of schools identified and a whole new set of indicators that we don't even know yet. So I'm just going to say to you.
Oh, no, I know, I've asked for our receivership list. Like, I just sent an email out this week, I'm still waiting for that list of administration. If you guys have it, please pass it along to the board, because I will keep asking for it until we get it.
A lot of it is embargoed too, that's, that's just, just want to say that.
Okay. But I, I would like for us to have that information. And like I said, the rest of it, I'll, I'll schedule a meeting to meet with you, Sean.
Great, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I just want to say this, I want to end on this note, and, and say to the food service department, I don't see Deli in the audience, I see Mike back there. They have been incredibly responsive to the voices of our students. We have a school newspaper, they wrote a couple of articles recently about the food service and the food being served and how it's being served. I shared that article with, with Deli and his team. It led to Deli, Gemma, myself, Ms. Pierce, visiting three local high schools, one in Gates, one in Roschinieta, and one in Greece. We spent half a day in each of those schools, looking at how they prepare food, how they serve the food, the kids' response to those foods, some of the similarities that, and differences. And then we were able to assign, allocate some of our community schools' funding to the food service department to do training, to retrain the kitchen managers. They're going to have training this Saturday at East. They're going to change and do some more new deli lines and offer salads and same food, same product, serve differently, presented differently for our students. And those same students who wrote the article are going to be the ones to promote and rebrand the cafeteria for the rest of their students. And I just, I share that because I think when Van talks about incubating different aspects of success, food service has been something I've talked about probably every year. And, and Deli and his team have repeatedly gone, come in, they've done assessment, they work with us, they've added new things, taken some things off. And I think we're finally, in year four, at a point where we're going to have the food service lines at East, and there's three other schools in the district that are pioneering this as well, look similar to our suburban and rural peers, and hopefully better. And I think that's time, I think that's well overdue. And I know they took a lot of planning and thoughtfulness on Deli's partners' teams. And if you were here, I would thank him personally, but this is, this is critical. This is the one item that our students have been requesting since the beginning of the EPO. And I thank him and his team. If anyone knows him personally, maybe they can share that with them.
Yeah, we should thank him as a board, too. Can I just, one more thing, Van, I'm sorry, one more thing, is that you mentioned a study, and I do want to state that we should have a study, and we should have an understanding. And that study should start now. We should not be waiting until last minute, three semesters away, to have that information so that we can make a sound decision on which path we're going to move with. So I would like to request that the board consider some type of resolution to move forward with a study on East High School and which path we're going to take.
I'd second that.
Absolutely. We'll have Dr. Lee try to set that up in our calendar. That, of course, would be a very public session. I don't know, we could, we'll, we'll work it out.
I would hope, Dr. Lee, I hope that perhaps we can set up some times between the study session to have the board over to visit East, when we have the study session, and can actually respond to what they actually experienced and see. That'll be appreciated.
Mr. President, is there any reason we couldn't have the study session at East?
No, absolutely no reason why we should not. I think that's a good idea. So, Dr. Lee, you'll try to set that up.
Well, can I, can I just mention, when I mean a study, I mean actual, a little bit the data, kind of what two paths would look like. We could probably go over the study results at East High School, that's, so I just want to throw that out, I don't want us to be at East High School having a roundtable conversation amongst ourselves about which path to go. I'm talking about an actual study done. What the impact would be if we moved forward and extended again, or what the impact would be if we chose not to extend it again, and what the transition would look like either way, an extension or an elimination, I don't know.
Yeah, either way, I mean, I don't even know, that, that could be done at East as well. But I think, Dr. Lee, you understand, and Dr. Nelmes, you understand what we want to have accomplished here, not just an assessment as to the numbers and the past success, what you've given us today, but also what it looks like going into the future, what the cost implications are, and that sort of thing. So I'm sure you can work with Dr. Lee on setting that up and making sure that substantively the issues that we want covered are thoroughly covered.
Thank you.
And I, and I believe that the interim president of the U of R would be very happy to hear that, because, and I want to be clear about something. He will be president for only a short period of time, they've already selected, they're permanent. But his position was, unless I misunderstood him, he would very much like to see, the university at that time would very much like to see the matter continue, the effort continue.
Actually, I bet with the new, the new president, when she was here, and as well as the, the new dean of education, who wants, who wanted to come to a board meeting tonight, I told him just to wait as we transition through. But both Anand and our president have both publicly said that they want to support the continuation of this, and they're committed to it. And, and the board of trustees, the new president of the board of trustees, was one of the individuals who paid for the first cohort of kids to go to DC, and he really wants to continue the work here at Rochester as well as a partner, so.
Commissioner Powell?
So just some clarifying questions about what our options are or are limited to. I mean, the fact that, let me see if I got some of the facts right. The contract was for a specific number of years, and that, that contract is up, right? So we have the option to renew. However, because East did not come off of the receivership, we, we can't, I mean, we're still going to have to have something, some kind of a relationship, right? Or, or close the school. Is that really, I mean, I don't think we're really talking about doing that.
No, no. Actually, it's the opposite, Commissioner Powell. That's the opposite, because I've spoken to the commissioners' team about East, and they acknowledge the work that we've done, and, and they too hope that this becomes a continuation, a continued project, in whatever form the board decides to have that. I mean, it is the board's prerogative. The original contract said a minimum of five years. So we could always continue as is or modify. I would say, I would say to you that, I think that as a failed school model, what we put in place with the board's approval worked in a failed school model. I think that as, now that we've had some progress, and we have some kids and families who've been in the system long enough and some structures in place, I think we can now kind of move it to like a high-needs, on, on track for progress model that maybe, that should be less costly and, and more aligned to schools that are similar in a district that are also high-needs.
But my, my point is, because it still hasn't met the targets for demonstrable improvement, hasn't reached the, for the graduation rate target, it's not like we can bring East back into the fold as one, that's not one of our options.
No, I would say that's, that's a clarification you need from the state, because we have met targets. We've met all of our targets, both upper, we've met our targets, overall targets for upper school and lower school. So you can not meet some and meet others. We've met lower school targets, and we've met upper school targets. There are some targets we haven't met, and that's, every school hasn't met some target. I mean, the lower school was 90, had a 90% of 100 for their targets, and they still met, but there's one we didn't meet. And that was an MPG target. But, so, so my, my answer is, in short, is you don't, the, the school is no longer a failed school. And, and it's a school that's in good standing with the state, and it continues to be so. And the state is excited about the continuation of this if the board sees fit.
Even though we haven't met that 67% graduation rate?
Because we started at 30%, so.
But you just said earlier that we, that you don't come off the receivership list.
Until you hit 67.
Which we haven't.
Yet.
And can I just say, and you just said we're in good, you're in good standing, and that's actually a contradiction. You can't be in receivership and in good standing, not per the state and how they identify and put out their list.
Actually, you can be. So, well, good standing is a title, yes, but you can be, so we're no longer.
Because they list receivership, right?
Right, we're no longer viewed by the state as a failed school. We've met our demonstrable indicators. Each school gets yearly demonstrable indicators to, to determine if they've been effective in the eyes of the commissioner. The commissioner, for three straight years, have deemed us as effective in terms of working towards our demonstrable indicators. And so that's what they determined to see if a school should be continued, returned to the district. We're in, I'm saying good standings, we are in.
Yeah, you're in good standing, you've met some demonstratable, but here is my question, so, but not all, but you're still technically in receivership on that end. So I just want to clarify, too, the other piece, back to what you were saying, Willa, like, I think that that's the option, right? And those would be the options right now. I was thinking more of a study of what, we have about two more years on the contract, right? One year? A year and a half? What a year and a half would look like. And it could be that in a year, you guys are off of receivership, right? I don't have that data here in front of me, but I do, I would like to, for us to look at what that means in a year and a half, whether they're in receivership or not. And that's a good point. If you guys are in receivership, what other options are they going to be different from them not being in receivership? Add that to the study, too.
And remember, the receivership law changes July, July 1, and I don't know what we're going to be then. So, all right.
So, let me just conclude by saying, again, I put it in perspective. I don't think there was a single person in the Rochester School District that had any idea that East High School in 2019 would be boasting a graduation rate of 67% from where they came. They were at 33% only, think about that, only 33% of their kids were graduating on time. And now we're looking at, in three years' time, and there are other good indicators too, but in three years' time, there, you know, Sean has good indicators that he can look at, you know, the number of regions that they've passed. So this isn't just speculation, and his numbers have always been on point when he's predicted something that's turned out to be the case. So we're looking at August of 2019 of this school that just three years before had a 33% graduation rate, now a 67. And this isn't by mistake, folks. This happened because people work methodically, cost us money, there are fewer students. But I would say, at this risk of sounding crass, duh, you got to have a good favorable adult-child ratio to effectuate change. And I will tell you, you know, the challenges that they're having over at Edison is because we've shifted students to the benefit of East and the students there to Edison, and we will make a huge mistake if we think that we can, ah, now that East is doing better, let's run it the way we used to run it, and let's, which would mean, we'll play the shell game, we'll shift all the students back to East, and then they'll have those resource challenges that they had before. I think we have to be very methodical, and I think quite honestly, and we'll have this discussion in our, our study session, but I think we have to be courageous, and we have to, and I know some people may not like this, I think we have to, you know, we are so in the business of recognizing failure, we do that all the time. Nobody hesitates and says, oh, look at, and they're right, look at how we're failing here, and look at how we're failing here. We see by the state's records, evidence of success, right? And there may be holes in that, and there may be challenges that we're, that they're having, and there may be ways in the work session that we can figure out, but listen, folks, let's, let's, when we see some success, I don't say celebrate it, but let's acknowledge it. And I, and I believe we'll have some time to do that. I also want.
Just one second, I have to make sure, I think you made a statement that I hope you didn't mean to make, was that East shifted their issues to Edison at the benefit.
No, students. Here's, here's my point, and it may not be your point, but this is my point. What I saw happen, and one of the criticisms that people make, because I hear it in the community, and I hear it in this building, that East doesn't have all the students it used to have. It doesn't. That's undisputed. You don't, I think it was 16, 1700 students when you guys took over in, in 2014, right? But more than 1,000 students.
I think that's a, I think that's a false narrative, and I just, I want to just push a little bit. So when the EPO was designed, it was designed to have 160 kids at grades six, seven, eight, and 180 kids at grades nine, 10, 11, 12. So we didn't shift any kids to Edison or any other schools. What happened was, we took in less kids in sixth grade than we may have had. We may have taken 300 kids before we got there, so 140 kids, 160 minus 300, 140 kids might have gone to other schools.
Okay, so, so Dr. Nelmes, what I'm, what I'm saying, let me correct my words. I'm not saying that East said, okay, we're going to pick these students and move them over here. I, I think I said the district, as a body, you don't, maybe let's, let's leave it here. What I'm saying is, you don't have as many students as you used to have.
That's true.
And every, that's one of the things people say, let's keep it real. Oh, they don't have, that's why they're successful, they don't have as many students. And this is what my comment about duh is. Duh? Yeah, that's right. Because it's right to have a better adult, a more favorable adult-child ratio, and to bring resources to bear to the challenges that that school was having. I'm, I'm not saying, and if, if, that's how it was interpreted, let me apologize.
I think it wasn't interpreted that way.
I'm not saying East did it. The district, the concern that I have is, what we will do, and I, this is how I was trying to express it, what, what we will do, if we do what we've always done, is we will move the problem from one building, and I'm not saying East has done this, move the problem from one building to another. So now, who's having all the challenges? I think that's how you have to look at it. Edison is having a good number of challenges in terms of suspensions, I hear people complain about that all the time, and academic performance. And I, I think that what, if we do what we've always done, we'll then say, ah, we got a problem here, let's start shifting stuff back. Now, who does that and when they do that is not what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm saying the pattern that I think is destructive is not acknowledging that you have to bring resources to bear in the third poorest community in the largest metropolitan cities, 75 top metropolitan cities in this country. You have to bring resources to bear in that. And the resources mean time and money and energy. And what you all have done is, it's not just said, oh, okay, we're just going to put more money and more people over there, but you've been very methodical about what is necessary to bring change. Let me bring that back to where, the point I was trying to make, which is, this chart is cannot be disputed, this is state data.[1670.11] is cannot be disputed, this is state data. Thirty-three percent to what we believe will be sixty-seven percent. I am, I have no problem talking about all the challenges that this community has, but if this, if, if, if we can't start acknowledging, and, and by the way, East isn't the only school we're having success, but if we can't start acknowledging and holding up where we are doing well, you are stealing from under the very people that you're trying to support, the parents and the children who need hope, who need to have to say, who need to be able to say, there's a school that I want to go to, because they're graduating kids. So, so, a different issue that I have about our timeframe to have this discussion group. We have, at East High School, this is one of the things that you all have done, you've developed and you presented an extensive exemplary, uh, uh, example of what we can do in the area of curriculum, right? And you've, you, you and your team have taken some time to develop that. Additionally, you guys have worked very hard at trying to build a pipeline between thirty-three School and East High School, because you have consistently said, uh, Dr. Eubing has consistently said, you need to have, you can't just take the kids at sixth grade and say, okay, magically, get yourself together. You have to have a support system in place to grow those students and those adults in terms of professional development. This conversation that you're talking about has to happen sooner than later, because, about what the future of East is, because i- if we're going to do this theater pattern, if we're going to provide professional development to people on the hopes that they will be able to coordinate, synchronize what they're doing to the elementary school with the secondary school, we need to make the decision about whether East is going to continue sooner than later, because there is no reason, if we're going to continue, to put all this on the back burner. We can't go forward with the, the pipeline connection with thirty-three School, or we could take advantage of the curriculum development, but the idea here is, if we're going to continue this effort, there are a lot of things tied to it. And I will just note for my colleagues, that the wonderful thing about Dan and Linda coming back is, they were very supportive of the connection between East High School and thirty-three School. And Linda Simmons, and I know Dan has a lot of experience, but I, I know one of the things that I, I truly appreciate about Linda's experience is, she's a curriculum person. Um, and, and I did, uh, have some conversations with Dan and Linda the other day, and they're not afraid or discouraged by the work that has been done at East, not that anybody has been, but we need to, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner LeBron, we need to begin this study session like ASAP, because a lot of things are tied up with it.
Can I just, um-
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to add though, that there were special education students that were moved out of East to Edison, and I would argue that that was not the best decision for those kids and for those parents. And I've talked to many of those parents, many of those parents have come together to oppose that it happened, because a, a lot of them didn't even know that it was going to happen to their student, it just happened. So I just want to throw that out there, um, and you kind of, I'm glad that you did do put some pushback on the statement, because when Van initially made the statement, it almost sounded like, we shifted all these students, we dumped them at Edison, you guys are doing great, too bad Edison, now you have all these problems, and I just want to make sure that that's not the statement we put out there. I just want to say one more thing, Van, and I know that you always want to push that we look at the positive with the negative, and I get that, but sometimes for me, you know, as a, as a someone who has the view lens of trying to be someone who's a realist about the situation in front of me, it's almost like giving kudos to my baby father for watching his daughter. I just want to throw it out there, because that's what it feels like, and I have friends who'll be like, oh, you gotta, and I'm not giving kudos to a man who I fathered a child with, and this is your responsibility too. So I just want to throw it out there, that yes, there are pockets of good things in the district, but right now, we are, we, we do need to focus on the negative. Um, and, and parents can make the deci, I don't think that many, not all parents have issues with the schools that their kids attend. I tend to have a positive experience in my kid's school for this school year. Um, in the past, I've had other schools in the district that I didn't have a positive experience as a parent, and other parents too. So I just want to throw that out there, that we should also focus on the issues at hand and solutions, and what those solutions are.
Well, a, a, again, and this is the forum for people having conversations, this is not like your father, a, a child's father taking care of his kid, that's a terrible analogy, and it's, and it's troublesome. Simply what happened here is, three years ago, th- th- these are the facts, this is not in dispute, three years ago, this school had a thirty-three percent graduation rate, a thirty-three percent graduation rate, and in three years, they're at, they will be at sixty-seven percent. I'm not saying, don't acknowledge the challenges that a community has. Hell, I do that every day, but what people need is reason to believe that this district has a place, and there are places, this isn't the only school, I, I could talk about other highlights in our district, but we cannot keep beating up on ourselves, particularly where our staff, our students, our, our parents are graduating kids. That sixty-seven percent represents people who are grad-
Go ahead, Van.
This is just my opinion. That represents people and grandmothers and grandparents that will be in East Auditorium watching their kids flip their tassel. That's something to be celebrated, and I'm telling you, they're doing it in percentages that they weren't doing it in three years ago. And, and by the way, Sean understands this, because I said he wasn't Superman, we got lots of heroes throughout this community, and my only point is, we should just recognize them. They are at this dais, and they are in this room, and they are in this community, and to the extent we can't say, wait a second, they did something good, and without qualifying it, it's disastrous for our people who need to hear good news. That's my only point. There's lots of bad news, I'd be the first to talk about it, but we should not talk about East High School and have all kinds of qualifiers for it. Yes, we should improve it, yes, there are things that can be enhanced, but ladies and gentlemen, my goodness, you've got a good example of some, of a high school that has been turned around. And, and I'll just tell you, it's not going to surprise any of you, I don't see why we're even sitting here wondering, and there's, we'll have a discuss, uh, study session-
Yeah.
I don't even see why we would even be thinking twice, I'm gonna keep it real with you, about replicating, uh, uh, this model. We replicate models year after year that aren't working. Every year, we, this board handles our budget, and we say, oh yeah, we're gonna approve that school, and these schools got, no offense, but they got thirty-seven percent graduations rate, fifty-seven percent graduation, we do that every year, and we, we renew them every year. Every year we do that in our budget. You've got some school that's, that's gone up ten percent almost every year, and we're questioning whether we're gonna renew that? We, we see nothing but failure, and we renew it every year in our budget. And you're gonna sit here and say, well, hmm, I don't know if we should renew this school, that's gone from thirty-three to sixty-seven percent. There's lots of negative going on, and I'm the first person to talk about it, but this is an example of something positive, and there are others, and I talk about them all the time. You say, oh, you, you talk about, I always talk about the positive things. Well, damn it, given all the negative that we hear, shouldn't we highlight what we're doing right?
Um, can I just also add though, you guys have passed these same models that are failing.
You're right.
I'm not a part of that, I want to throw that out there, and, and some other new commissioners on here.
You voted on last year's budget, right?
I voted no, on last year's budget.
Okay.
I don't know if you've reme, you forgot, but I was very adamantly against that budget.
Alright.
Um, I also though, want to add that we still also have Monroe High School, we have Edison, we have, um, Northeast, Northwest at the Douglas Campus, we have Young Men's Leadership School in, in Charlotte, which is struggling, we know that it's struggling, we've had parents come in here. So Van, I hear you saying East, and then, and this is not to knock down East High School at all, I do think that the work that you guys have done is phenomenal, but you put all that emphasis on a sixty-seven percent graduation rate for one high school, and we have other high schools and thousands and thousands of other grandparents and parents that want to see their kids succeed at those high schools too, Van? So, no, yes, I do want to study, yes, I'm gonna question whether this model can actually, at this cost and rate, be replicated in our other high schools so that they're successful too. And I don't think that it can. However, I don't have all the data, I don't have all the numbers, and I would need to, I need all that information before I'm able to make a sound judgment decision, but I would never vote for any programs or models in this district that have historically failed our kids over and over and over again, and that's the type of stuff that, you, you literally just said that, that is insanity to me. You're voting for and approving budgets that are failing our kids, that's crazy.
So, so, I, I, I take it, I take it, you will, this, and this is good conversation, don't, don't feel afraid by it, don't be fearful of it, it's good, positive dialogue, that's what elected officials do. So, so I would assume, Commissioner LeBron, and she and I can laugh and joke afterwards, don't worry about it, don't feel like the Rome is falling apart, but, but, so that means, Commissioner LeBron, you will never be voting for, given all the schools we have, that so many of them are struggling, you will never vote for a budget, because, because that's what my colleagues have done in the past.
I will never, let, let me just clarify, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Van, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is my point, point here. This board, obviously not you, but many good, caring, decent people have been ta, have taken the advice of good, caring superintendents, and who have provided direction and guidance on where certain schools should go, knowing very well that those schools are struggling, but they're trying to, all, all these people in front of us, trying to figure out a way to make it work. And they have suggested, they put budgets before us, saying, hey, listen, you should support this, because this is what we're trying to do. And we have voted for that, and, and by the way, I have no shame in having voted for them, because I know these people are doing their damnedest to provide the best quality services, services for our kids in a very difficult situation. So, I, I don't know, are you never gonna vote because none of our schools are being successful?
No.
Will you ever vote for a school that's not successful?
I'm saying, I'm not gonna be voting for budgets with models that have failed our kids historically, so let me be very clear. And let me just also say that you said, I, I'm not taking away that people care, but caring and competency need to be attached together. It's all wonderful that you care, but I need you to be competent too, and we're making these decisions, and you're presenting models to us, so I just want to throw that out there, Van.
I think the folks at East have proven that they are competent and that they care. Um, was anybody else gonna add anything else?
Yes, please. Oh, please, go first.
Reverend Davis?
At the end of the day, I just want to make sure that the narrative that is here, is there anything else about the narrative that has been put out there that needs to be changed? Because I just want it understood that the narrative is not that there's less students, that's why they're successful. Then I heard they added restorative practice, I heard that there were unfunded mandates, I could spend a day that, that are now funded, they've changed the building, the school climate. So I just want it clear that just making less students is not why East was successful. So if you could reiterate, are those the things-
Yes.
Is why East is being successful right now? I just want the narrative corrected.
And I just want to, and I think the other, the other thing to reiterate is that, it all happened because the board has supported the model from day one, and the board has, um, allowed us to, to, to function in ways that are autonomous at times, but we still are held to the same standard, and that the district staff itself has helped us think differently about our work. I mean, this has been a collective effort, this is a board effort, and somehow, um, due to, I think, somehow, like, the more success we got, I think the more scrutiny that there became, and, and, uh, I hope and pray that, at the end of this year, um, we're all collectively talking about how to improve and replicate the things that happened at East, well, in other schools. I know, I've talked to the, the leadership team at Young Men's Leadership, and talked about some of the things we're doing, we're sort of practice. I've spoken with Monroe High School about some of the things that we're doing. It's been very informal conversations, and Edison Tech, I, I know Walter and Jacob really well, personally and professionally. So, we have done things, uh, informally. I think, what I hope happens in the next phase of this, is that there's a more formal attempt to learn from the experiences, to replicate or modify those things accordingly, and to do so in a cost savings way. I, I, your point is valid, and that's why I'm saying, when we, when the board decided to do East, it's because the school was, it had failed. And so it costs more to catch kids up and give parents and the community more hope about the school system, and to, I mean, all, those things came with a cost. And I think that we're at a point now where perhaps the cost shifts, and we take our teacher leaders, and if you want us to work with, or if they determine we're implementing the curriculum at Edison, for, for example, our teacher leaders might be the ones over there supporting their teachers, learning the curriculum. That's not a cost outside of the district, that's a cost within the district. We may decide that the money that we spent to change the infrastructure, the stuff is hardwired now, we don't have to spend money on putting security cameras in places where kids were being assaulted in previous years. We don't have to, you know, we don't have to buy computers for every student, kid in the building has computers, we don't have to buy that again for a few years. There are things that are fixed costs, that are not associated with the EPO program, they're associated with trying to make the building a safe and caring place for adults and kids. Those things stay at East if I'm there or not, but the curriculum and the staff development and the respect, we had over two hundred parents at one of our last meetings, like, the parents are more engaged and the students are involved, those are things that we should be talking about in the narratives that the community needs to hear, and that other schools need to see so they can do the same thing. Those are cost neutral interventions. And I think that somehow, the dollar amount has overshadowed the actual school culture and climate and academic progress that East has had over the last few years. And I don't know how to, how to fight that narrative, and at times I'm sick of fighting it, to be honest with you, um, but that's why I'm inviting the board over. I think that, um, Commissioner Davis's comments are rooted in the fact that she saw those things when she visited. She spoke to kids and staff and talked to them directly, I didn't, we didn't, it wasn't a planned walk, we walked down the hall, we went whenever classrooms were open. So, we show you the good, the bad, and the ugly, we're not saying we're a perfect system, but I think when you, when you visit the school and you see the context, and you go visit other schools and see their context, hopefully you'll bring to us things that we can improve upon, about things you've seen, and hopefully you can take lessons learned at East and implement at other schools too. This is a board initiative, this is a district initiative, and I hope that the narrative changes to one that celebrates the success of our staff and our students and the board's initiative and the things that you've supported, and not be initiative that is constantly bantered about, um, over a lot, a lot of times, innuendo and things like that. Like, I gave you, for example, the special ed piece, we don't have to go back and forth about that. The special ed piece, I gave you guys all the emails that existed, that special ed conversation began in April of the previous school year. There was a change in leadership downtown, and those kids didn't get placed until the second week of September, that wasn't East. I gave you guys all those emails, that was clearly, it was a systemic, but, but somehow that got attached to us. It was something that happened prior to us, and so, I've just eaten, I've said, okay, it's East, we got rid of kids, whatever, I'm not gonna keep fighting that, but I gave you guys the data, I gave you the evidence, and still, we talk about that. Not you, I'm saying, still in the community, talk about that. The funding situation, no matter how much I explain that funding formula, finance, so the department here has verified that wasn't right, Ed Trust said it wasn't right, I actually sent on Ed Trust Board, right? So the board, that, the advisory board that, that, that the company that, um, provided that report, I sent on their advisory board. I told them it was wrong, but that's the only data it had to go off of, and so I'm still fighting that narrative, even at tonight's, uh, forum. So it's like, there are times at which we get so distracted by these narratives that don't really reflect the true nature of the work, that we forget about the kids in the system, we forget about the parents who've been engaged, about the teachers who actually feel good about their work. One thing that I'm most proud about is that teachers feel good to work at East. How do I know that? Because our attendance rate of, of teachers is up. Teachers aren't taken off the Friday before Christmas to go shopping, they're working, right? So, so like, there are other cultural norms that you can't quantify on a graduation rate that I think people are missing. And, and, and I think you have to see it to believe it, and then hopefully we can replicate that across the board. So to answer your question, Commissioner Davis, I hope that's the narrative that, um, that defines East, while I'm there and while after me.
Mr. President.
Yep.
I want to thank you for everything you just said. I think it, it, it actually speaks directly to both points that are being made here, both by Commissioner LeBron and by President White. There are areas that we need to be concerned about, but we need to really sift through and, and point by point determine what, what are, and come to consensus on what the sticking points are. But as for, as for giving praise and, and holding up success, I want to, I want to support President White's position in this way. You've indicated that you want to take this to other schools, you have been in dialogue with other schools to show how this model and this, and the curriculum can be rolled out into other schools. But the leadership in those schools, the teachers in those schools are not going to embrace it if they think that from here in central office, here on this Board of Education, the philosophy is, the beatings shall continue until morale improves. They are not going to embrace it unless we can present a praise sandwich. This is what you did well, this is what we want you to see you improve, keep on doing the, the things you're doing well, keep on doing those things. The praise sandwich is a tremendous tool that is, it's painless on our part to, to embrace that strategy. It doesn't make it any less effective because we said nice things, doesn't make the criticism any less effective because we said nice things on both sides of it. I've raised four kids. If all I did was scream at my kids, they would very quickly learn that, that there was no point in trying to please mom. But because I notice the things they do well, and I call it to their attention and say, great job, keep doing it, now they're empowered, right? That's where empowerment comes from, that's where self-esteem comes from. Our district needs a shot of self-esteem, and, and so, and it's up to us to set the tone by acknowledging the good things, not dismissing the things that are, are breaking our backs, like, the financial stuff, right? There, there are issues that are breaking our back, and we've got to get to the heart of them, but we don't have to withhold praise to make those things work.
Alright. Um, any further comments? Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Nelson, appreciate it. Appreciate it. All right. Next thing that we have on our agenda is consideration of resolutions, but that, that particular resolution, which is 577, if you look at your white agenda sheet, the blue one is, was changed. So, Dr. Lee passed around a new agenda sheet. Item number six is consideration of resolutions. That's 577. That is a particular resolution that relates to a suspension and appeal. And so, long as there are, if there are questions about this particular suspension, resolution or appeal, we would have to consider them in executive session. Are there, the packets were distributed earlier. You all have, hopefully have had the opportunity to look at those packets. If you have questions regarding those packets, we can, I can certainly take a motion later on to go into executive session to discuss that one particular resolution. Ms. Wade is here and is available to go into executive session with us. Are there any questions regarding that resolution?
I was, let me just, just some clarification. I was trying to get the white sheet. So, what, what packet are you referring to?
No, no, no. All I'm saying is that this is the agenda. You got the right one. And it refers to the yellow sheet, which is 577.
Okay.
There was an earlier version of the agenda that was blue. It had resolution 560.
Only difference is the resolution.
Yeah, just the resolution.
Yeah, there should be a motion to go into executive session.
Okay. All right. So, we'll do that in a, in a, in a minute. I won't take that motion just now. Let's skip to agenda item number eight, new business. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Powell's on the phone, so we'll ask Vice President Elliott, if you wouldn't mind reviewing the board's 2019 legislative agenda.
The adopted 2018 legislative agenda has been provided to you for review as a basis for developing the 2019 agenda. This document was approved by the board in the February 15, 2018 business meeting and presented at the March 10, 2018 legislative breakfast. Traditionally, the board's legislative agenda has been a means to advocate for the district's needs and to support specific legislation that will help to achieve these asks. With the closure of the 115th congressional session on December 31, 2018, a majority of the bills supported on the 2018 legislative agenda are now defunct. It is unclear at this time what the legislative priorities will be for the 116th Congress. Additionally, with the November 2018 elections of a new state legislature, the state level bills listed in the 2018 legislative agenda are also defunct. Therefore, the 2019 legislative agenda will primarily depend on priorities that have been yet to be established at the state and federal level. For these reasons, I recommend the following. Remove the legislative items from the U.S. Government section of the 2019 legislative agenda, which now are dead bills. Remove the legislative items from the New York State section of the 2019 legislative agenda. As Congress and state legislative priorities are developed and announced, I propose that we hold on finalizing the board's legislative agenda and also wait to establish an appropriate date in the spring to host the 2019 legislative breakfast. Instead, in the coming weeks, we should continue to work with our affiliates at the Monroe County School Boards Association and the Big Five to establish the legislative items that will benefit the district.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the report that Vice President Elliott has just delivered? We're good? Commissioner Powell, would you mind reviewing the 2019-2020 budget development calendar? Can you do that for us? Yep. Thank you.
Dr. Jerry, briefly. We start the town hall meetings. We have done this for a number of years where we began having conversations about the budget even before the budget presentation to the board. We're very specifically targeting the board sanctioned organizations by the council and Then we have the actual presentation of the budget book in March, keep it in March, April.
The typical three rounds of budget deliberations and two public hearings are listed here as well. All of the dates of public meetings are in bold, starting with the March 19, going through April 2, April 4, April 11, April 16, April 23. Those are very much in keeping with what we've done in past years. The budget adoption is currently scheduled to be May 9. This allowing the 33 days between delivering the budget book to City Hall, an approved budget book to City Hall and, and city councils vote on our budget. The 33 days being stipulated by city charter. So, I mean, I don't need to recite each day into, into the record. You have them in front of you. Okay?
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments or concerns about the budget calendar?
I had a question about March 23. How long is that, does that meeting last? Because I, I teach a class. How long is the meeting on March 23? It starts at 10. How long does that last?
It's, it's scheduled to go approximately two or three hours.
Okay, so.
It's a work session.
Any other questions or comments regarding the budget calendar? All right. We have one more item under new business, which is Roman numeral number eight, and that is a discussion of the policy and, policy log and the proposed meeting calendar. As I indicated earlier on, you know, many folks in the employ of the board, we all have challenges and the person who leads this particular effort or helps us in this regard, many of you know is, is not available and has not been available as of late. So, I would ask for your indulgence and patience. I know Carl, our general counsel, has worked on this policy log and the proposed meeting calendar, but we're really not in a position to have much substantive discussion tonight. So, I ask for your indulgence and patience, and, and we'll make sure we get that on the next agenda as agenda item when we're fully staffed to have that discussion, so. That would lead us to announcement of upcoming meetings. I'm, I'm gonna ask for the motion to go into executive session in a second, but I wanna tell folks out there listening that we.
Van, is there a calendar? Are we gonna discuss the calendar?
Um.
Right there.
The big, yeah, the big sheet.
Yes. Yep, uh-huh.
Okay. I'm sorry, before we move on, I thought this was part of the agenda tonight.
No, go ahead.
No, it's just the, this is the proposed master calendar for our meetings, moving forward and what committees, when committees are gonna meet, the dates, the times, our board business meeting twice a month. So, I think this is here for us to review, to finalize it.
Yeah, I think, I think Dr. Lee just put that on there so that you all could take a look at it.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has, it's not on the agenda, but it was there for your review. Any questions or comments about it? Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner LeBron.
I just have.
Commissioner Shepherd, and then, Commissioner Shepherd, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, so I just, I was talking to Sine about the fact that we kind of had two resolutions that we passed that were conflicting. So, one was that we would suspend our committees for six months, but then we just passed another resolution that included a new plan for this. But in that plan, it had two separate committee meetings that needed to be added, which were the policy committee and also the personnel committee. And, you know, I was talking to Dr. Lee earlier about the fact that we still probably need to have those two committees separated, and they need to start immediately because we have so much stuff that goes on with policies. And I don't see, I don't see us being able to do it on our business meeting nights, and it cannot wait six months. So, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, for us to consider putting our policy, at least our policy committee meetings, if we didn't wanna start the personnel, put our policy committee meetings back on the master schedule. And I think we, we had discussed that it would be the Tuesday before, the second Tuesday of every month, I think is what we had. But I have to look and check. I think that's what we had, the second Tuesday of every month.
Well, you are absolutely right, Commissioner Shepherd. Two committees sort of survived our modification to our committee structure, policy and personnel.
Finance.
Well, finance did, and audit, I should say audit, of course, naturally, right?
Yeah.
So, you just cut one committee while I was out?
Well, finance, finance didn't really survive. Finance just became a part of one of the, yeah.
One of the board business meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what we have is policy, personnel, and audit. State law requires, of course, audit continue.
Yeah, that we have audit.
But we do have policy and personnel. Now, we never did, consistent with what the bylaws required, appoint those committees. We normally do that at the first business meeting, the organizational meeting. The bylaws indicate that it's, if it's not done, the organizational meeting, it can be done at a subsequent meeting. And those committees are appointed with the advice and cons, by the board president, with the advice and consent of the full board. I, I, I think you're right, Commissioner Shepherd. We need to shore up those committees. I would ask that we take the next, between now and the next business meeting to identify, I'll poll the board, see who's interested. I think I know who's interested in chairing these committees. I'll poll the board, see what the advice and consent, advice that I get from the full board about these particular committees, and we'll have an announcement at our second meeting in the month of January, which is the 24th.
Fourth.
24th. Is that acceptable to everybody? Yes, Dr. Kino?
Just have a question, clarification on what is the role of the personnel committee? I've never attended, but just by the label of it, could give the impression that you're stepping into a management, a management role.
There's a cover sheet, Doc, that you know, that Sine sent out about the role of the Human Resources Committee. So, I don't know if you wanna look at that and then give us some feedback if you can, if you would.
Yeah, and, and I should tell you that Mr. Lowengard and Ms. Simmons and I discussed this as well, the overlap. But again, there's a detailed description of that. I think some of that, quite honestly, some of the language in that memo that Dr. Lee will share with you, I, I think won't alleviate your concerns. But some of it is, is clearly within the realm of the Board of Education. But again, between now and January 24, perhaps we can have some offline conversations about that. And if the board has to, or feels that it wants to amend some of that language, given the counsel that it receives from Mr. Lowengard and from Dr. Kino, we can do that. Again, I, I expect to make recommendations, make an announcement with respect to who these chairs are going to be before the 24th, and we'll also have some conversation about the scope of the personnel committee. I, I do wanna note, and everybody up here knows this, some out there may not know it, that Vice President Elliott, for many years, has been trying to get us to address some of the challenges that we have in personnel issues, like a lack of diversity. So, it's not all about what some may think of, make sure you appoint the right people in selecting names. She and others are legitimately concerned about, for example, policy implications of, that relate to personnel issues. So, of course, I will talk to Vice President Elliott about those challenges when we have a conversation about the, that particular committee. Any other questions or comments? All right?
I have some about dates.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. On March 5, I see a special meeting, and I was advised by Deborah Flanagan that there's an audit committee meeting. I didn't know if they moved it or not. Did they move it yet?
They have moved it.
They have moved it.
There is no audit committee meeting.
Okay. I didn't, and then on the 12, there's a business meeting. It's usually on Thursdays, and the 12 is a Tuesday. Did you mean to have the, um, business meeting on Tuesday?
That date was proposed because of the initial date that was proposed by the administration for the budget presentation. They've since moved the budget presentation to March 19. So, the business meeting can be held on the 14th, if that's the preference of the board.
Probably should be.
Yes.
Probably should be moved back to the 14th.
That was it.
Yes. Dr. Hallmark?
So, I have a suggestion. I haven't actually discussed this with anybody, but I wanted to put it out there. Since the governance committee is being dismantled and PD is part of the charge of the governance committee, and I know there have been a lot of recent conversations among board members around the upcoming contracts, labor stuff, I would really like it if Mr. Kristoff could do an in-service on the Taylor Law for the board, and I would hope that there would be some interest in that.
Carl, you think you could do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President? On the topic of board PD, all of last year, we talked about putting together a presentation on the capital improvement plan process. I see Mike Schmidt is in the back, and I thought we were gonna have something before the end of the year. Can we get an update on whether that, whether a video package was put together on that? Or if that's got pushed out a little bit?
Yeah. Mike, if you wanna come up very briefly and?
Because that's really important professional development. It, it gives deep background on all of the various facilities, resolutions that come before us over the course of the year.
So, it's currently entered into final production. Netflix is actually doing the production for us, and we'll be ready within a couple of weeks. It's gonna be very stunning. The, the, I think a lot of the theatrical procedures involved.
Oscar worthy. That is serious.
So, the, the facilities team has already broken seven cameras, so we really, it's been very effective at the budget. In all seriousness, it is, it is completed. We should be ready to, we can bring it forward sometime in February if you'd like. We're ready, we're ready to go.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay. Again, it may sound like a broken record, but I wanna thank Dr. Lee for all the work that she has done. Again, I, I think all of us up here have a real appreciation for all the coordination that is really necessary, and, and while she's doing, trying to do all that work, each of us are calling her 10 times a day, trying to figure out how we can better serve the students. So, again, we really appreciate your work. The last bit of business is I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters relating to the discipline of a particular student, and also during this executive session, we need to seek guidance of counsel relating to a matter that is the subject of litigation. It has been moved by Vice President Elliott.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner LeBron. I think I heard her say that earlier. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Van, I wanna, I wanna add something to the agenda. I wanna add Young, the high school over in Charlotte, the Young Boys.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
I would like to add them to our agenda tonight as well.
Who?
The Young Men's, Young Men's High School out in Charlotte. Yeah, leadership.
But what do you mean?
It is.
Oh, for executive session?
For executive session.
Okay. All right. Well, you, you wanna talk about a particular person? Because we, we.
In the, yes, in executive session.
Okay.
I just wanna add it to the agenda, so I wanna let everybody know now.
But, but I just wanna be clear, so the folks know, you're not gonna be just generically talking about the Young Men's Academy, because we couldn't go into executive session just for that purpose.
I know.
It, it has to be about a particular person.
It's about a particular person, but I just wanna add it on the agenda. Sorry, I got tongue twisted at the end there.
No, no, no. All I'm trying to clarify, Commissioner LeBron, when you go into executive session.
Yep.
It has to be very clear why you're doing that. And because you mentioned leadership, I don't want people to think we're going offline to talk about a whole school. We're not. We're going to talk about a particular person. All right, so that motion's been made, and we're going to executive session. Anybody interested in following us afterwards? We're gonna reconvene in open session downstairs, and we'll close out our meeting on the second floor. Carl, did you?
The motion to go into executive session, as we always also, I'll make an exception.
I did say that. I did say that. No, that's all right. All right. Good night, everybody.